Call to order the regular meeting in council chambers. If everybody could please rise for pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand on my nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to number, item number two, which is changes to the order of the agenda. Any council members, staff or public, would like to see a change in order? Thank you, staff. Public seen none. We'll move on to item number three, a report from closed session.
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Landzone. And we'll move on to item number four, which is council communications and announcements. Who'd like to start, Councilmember Grokot?
Sure, I would do that. I wanted to, I don't have any report from meetings or anything like that, but I did want to read a letter in light of June 6th's passing, and this was written by Will Richardson of San Carlos. Hopefully, I can get through this pretty quickly, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor. Dear editor, DDA still looms large for many different people, not only the veterans who took part in the June 6th landings, but apparently not for the editors of the local newspapers who couldn't find any room even for a brief mention. Why, I wonder? Remembering the sacrifices doesn't glorify war, it says thank you to those who participated in keeping America free. That's all. The participants didn't ask for memorials, they did their duty, and most of them came home. Duty meant something then, does it today outside of our armed forces? I was at my 55th high school reunion a couple of years ago, seated at our table with their wives, where Richie, who served in the Army, Billy in the Marines, Charlie, a paratrooper, and Izzy, who flew a light, single-engine spotter plane, and I was in the Air Force, navigator, for more than four years. We were lucky, we served mostly in peacetime, and we knew how lucky we were. We all had mutual friends or relatives who died in World War II or Korea, but we served nevertheless, and we remembered our classmates who weren't so lucky. Too bad the other local editors didn't remember. Why? Our duty and sacrifice no longer politically correct subjects for their newspapers. So I just wanted to read that because it was written by a San Carlos resident, obviously a veteran, and I would like him to know, and others like him out there, that no, we don't forget. FDR said that was a day that would go down in infamy in our nation, and I don't think we should ever forget it, for those who sacrificed their lives for freedom for us.
Thank you. Anything else, Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Councilmember Royce?
Mr. Mayor, two quick items. Did want to remind everybody of Vertical Challenge coming up at the Hiller Aviation Museum on the 21st. If you're interested on Friday night, they're doing Wild Brew Yonder. So if you're interested in microbrews and helicopters, not at the same time, this is a good thing to do. And would also note that the annual chamber luncheon is on the 17th. Cheryl was telling me I'm right, the 17th.
Thank you. Thank you. Vice Mayor Grisilli?
Nothing to add, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Well, and for me, I have a special recognition I'd like to give out, and if I could ask Paul Spagnoli to please come up to the podium area.
Finally, we got a stand-up comedian mic. I'll be here till about 10:30 to tell your friends. This is Paul Spagnoli, and Paul has spent since May 2001 on the Traffic and Circulation Commission, and he is retired from that commission. And we would like to recognize Paul with this plaque, which is given on behalf of the city and the City Council, partly for your dedication and service to the city of San Carlos.
My first name, thank you very much, and also on behalf of the city for your hard work. And congratulations. I also feel compelled to point out that your chief, which is Chief Spagnoli, Benicia is here, who used to be commander of San Carlos, so welcome back. Nice to see you here. And if you'd like to say anything, you're welcome to, or tell us a joke.
No jokes. You're supposed to have all the cartoons, jokes, whatever, so.
Well, now the pressure's on. Well, I'll leave it. Thank you very much for your hard work, we really appreciate it. Okay. Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to item number five, which is public comment. And this is persons wishing to address the City Council on matters, excuse me, not on the posted agenda tonight, may do so. And I have five speaker slips, I believe, maybe six. Could we please have Joe Rothengast come up and address the council? And this, there's a limit of two minutes on public comment. If you could state, for the record, your name and also city of residence.
No problem. Joe Rothengast, I live here in San Carlos, just up the road, 116 Wildwood. So, you know, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. You know, I understand you guys seemingly sometimes seem like you have a thankless job up there, probably. And I know you've done, you'll issue predecessors, and some of you have done, you know, some nice work in town with stuff like the Trader Joes and things like that. But I'm down here tonight because, you know, I've gotten wind, and I think a lot of people are unaware, but what they're starting, the awareness is starting to get out there, that there's a proposal to actually, you know, shut down the tennis lights in town in order to save, you know, a minor amount of money. And I just, it's the most absurd thing that I've ever heard, you know, in my life for a town to do. I mean, you know, if the parks and recs at some level, you know, can't maintain its own facilities.
I'm sorry, this is all, this is only for things that are not on the posted agenda, and this is under, falls under the budget item tonight, I believe.
You want me to come up at the end and do this? I'm happy to come up at the end and do it.
It's, we just want to apply the rules evenly across the board.
That's fine.
If it's regarding the budget item, regarding the tennis courts, I think it should be moved to that item number.
Then we'll do it then. That's fine. Sorry for that.
Thank you very much. So again, these are for items not on the posted agenda, and we'll call you back up for that item. Thank you. Michael Woolridge for, Michael Woolridge, sorry.
My fault. Hi, my name is Michael Woolridge. I live on the greater east San Carlos neighborhood. I'm here to basically just express my views on the transit, proposed Transit Village that's going to be, I guess it's being looked at being built. My mainest, or my biggest concern is the building height as it pertains to the greater east San Carlos neighborhood. I've looked at the superimposed building plans as the views pertaining, you know, from this greater east San Carlos neighborhood, and it looks like these buildings are just way too high and just dominate the skyline for the residents of Old County and the other first five or six houses on the neighborhood streets there. And I am just very displeased at this monstrosity of a, you know, building complex that's being put up right there next to the Caltrain tracks. And looking overlooking the greater east San Carlos neighborhood, I mean, it's going to block sunlight in the evening hours whenever the sun is setting. These buildings can be targets for graffiti also. I know the owner of Jersey Joe's, he has a business, and he has to paint over the graffiti a few times every month. And I was just checking to see if, you know, if somebody could look into lowering these building heights down to one and two stories instead of three and store floors, floor stories. And that's about all I have right now.
Great, thank you very much.
I'd like to, can we put this letter in the court documents, or?
You're welcome to give that to the city clerk.
Can I give that to Christine?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Darwin Patnode?
I'm on the panel's lighting issue, so let's be correct with the budget.
Thank you very much. And Paul Maginetti, Manganetti? Mic close, sorry. Please feel free to correct me.
My name is Paul Maginetti, I live on Springfield. I'd like to speak about the Transit Village as well. I feel that the proposed Transit Village will lower the standard of living for the people living in the east San Carlos community. It will provide an even lower standard of living for those who are going to be living in it. Living right on the tracks is not a very pleasant way to live. I strongly suggest that you lower it to two to three floors and increase the use of commercial and public use. The two-foot reduction in pitch proposed by the developer frankly, to me, is insulting and insensitive to the needs of, the needs of greater east San Carlos. The increased, excuse me, the increased safe pedestrian access to downtown San Carlos is needed for greater east San Carlos. I want east San Carlos and the rest of San Carlos to be one, so that we can have one city of good living and not two, but unequal ones. Thank you. And I'd also like to include my letter with the city clerk.
Great, thank you very much. And Sheerston Barley?
I'm here to talk about.
With regard to budget? Okay, great. Any other public comment on items not on the posted agenda? Very good, we will move on to approval of consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council staff or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. Counsel, item number six?
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of the consent calendar item six, A, B, C, D, E, M, F.
Second? Christine?
Councilmember Armad?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
And with that, we'll move on to item number seven, which is reports to council.
The only report to council is the fire department report. The chief is in the audience, if you have any questions regarding that report.
Counsel, any questions or comments for chief?
Mr. Mayor, I did have one comment. I did want to thank the chief for including an item that I had requested in the last report regarding green activities for the fire department, so just to highlight them, they are using biodiesel whenever possible in their engine. The new apparatus has regeneration capabilities, they're supporting energy miser concepts for, I'm assuming it's the department buildings, et cetera?
And within the department.
And finally, we are looking for the incorporation of hybrid vehicles. The one additional request I'll make to the department as a note is, if there's an opportunity to coordinate a meeting with San Carlos Green, just to go through an additional audit and see what other opportunities there may be. So, that's the end of my comments.
Great. Any other comments, counsel? Chief, thanks again for a complete report, we appreciate it. It's great to be kept up to speed on everything that's going on, and especially responding to councilmember comments like that. Very good, thank you. With that, we'll move on to item 8A, which is unfinished business and consideration of resolutions regarding the budget. City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. As you know, we do a mid-year budget report in January or February of each year, and right after that, we begin the process of preparing the annual budget. So it literally is a four- to five-month process. The document before you this evening has been subject to that process. I would like to express my appreciation to the staff that's been working on that document, Jeff Malphey and Rebecca Mendenhall have been leading the finance department staff and coordinating the activities to put this document together, and then finally, all of the departmental staff who have worked with us to prepare the document, to find the most frugal and efficient ways to put forth the city's budget in a way to maintain the services as best we can, given the very limited resources that we have. The document before you is indeed a balanced budget moving forward for the next year. There are some things that are not funded within this document that we should strive to fund in future years. The gas before D5 retiree medical, the equipment replacement funds are two examples that come immediately to mind. But I think it's fair to say that we've made good progress this year in addressing a structural budget deficit that we've been experiencing in San Carlos for a good number of years. We've done that through significant reductions in personnel and staffing, as well as operational accounts throughout the city. As we've talked before, we've moved from 125 or 126 positions down to 110 now, that are fully authorized positions within the city's budget. With that, it's, you know, it's easy to see why we are now to a point that we're looking at program reductions, and we're not able to offer all of the programs and services in this year's document or in this year's budget proposal as what we've been able to provide in the past. In the last three years, we've cut administration by over 30 percent, we've cut Parks and Recreation by over 18 percent. We've lost seven positions within the police department, and we've contracted out the dispatch services. We've made significant reductions in personnel and staffing, and we are to a point now that these reductions are impacting the services that we can provide to the city of San Carlos. With that, I'd like to introduce Jeff Malphey, who can talk about the specific program effects of the document before you within this year's budget presentation, and then we would all be happy to answer any questions that the council might have. Jeff?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Jeff Malphey, city's administrative services director. Just like to echo Mr. Royce's comments and thank Rebecca Mendenhall, the city's finance officer, and the rest of the finance staff, as well as the staff in the other city departments for helping put together this year's annual operating budget, as well as yourselves in the time that you've put into not only reading, but considering the complex items before you. It's an honor to be presenting my third budget before the council. I wish it contained better news. It's again been a difficult budget year. Before you this evening are basically two resolutions. The first resolution, adopting the annual operating budget for 2008, 2009 fiscal year, as well as a resolution appropriating the city's GAN limit. In terms of just providing some oversight, within this PowerPoint presentation, there really is no new information for the city council. I'm providing this as sort of a summary of the process that we've gone through for the community, for those who haven't participated in the process, just to sort of bring them up to speed. In terms of putting together some of the base budget assumptions for the city, we're projecting about 3 percent increase in sales tax, about 3 percent increase in property tax. There are some mitigating factors that go into, that change these numbers somewhat within the actual budget document. For example, sales taxes actually, within the document, goes up to about 6 percent because we're including new revenue for the San Carlos marketplace. The property tax number comes down for the year because of some adjustments we're making in a property tax refund that we've received from the county the last few years, called a ERAF rebate. But in general, when you take those anomalies aside, the revenue is projected to grow about 3 percent in the city. The transit and occupancy taxes, you can see, much higher number, 20 percent. A lot of that's catch-up, that we've been, you know, over the last two years, we saw a big jump. We think it's probably plateaued, we hope to see it staying where it is. So the revenue number is 20 percent over the budget, but it's actually only a few percent over the actual number we received last year, so we're not projecting much growth in TOT, it's more of a budget thing. We have a, you know, slight decrease and slight increases across the board for fees for service within the city related to red light cameras and other miscellaneous revenue. The council's authorized user fee adjustments about a month ago totaling $30,000. And then we've included within the revenue budget, the $1.3 million the city receives in revenue for hosting the regional garbage transfers and recycling transfer station in the city of San Carlos. In terms of the assumptions we use for the general fund expenditures, we budget in this city salary and benefits at a 100 percent cost, including the cost of living adjustments, PROs and medical increases, and any other contractual obligations the city's aware of at the time we put the budget together. PROs retirement rates, the last couple of years have stabilized, they do continue to increase, they do remain at a high level, but they aren't, we aren't seeing the double-digit increases that we were seeing five or six years ago. So that is good news. However, the fact that, you know, PROs right now is having some difficulty along with the rest of the financial markets in terms of what they're projecting for rates of return on the PROs investment portfolio. However, PROs instituted what they call rates moving a few years ago, and so that should sort of balance out so that we, again, it keeps that rate relatively stable, plus or minus 2 or 3 percent. We've seen medical rate increases upwards of 10 percent over the last few years, we've got that built into the budget. We won't know until we get those rates over the next couple of months from the various medical benefit providers as to what the exact rates are, but we think 10 percent, based on our historical average, is probably close to the mark. We're seeing cost of living increases based on the Bay Area indexes of between 3.4 and 3.8 percent, so we're building those into the cost of supplies and material and those kinds of things. That's excluding the energy sector, which we've handled in the budget separately. We've been setting aside money for post-employment retiree benefits, that's basically retiree medical in this city, to the tune of $680,000 that the city's now putting forth, paying 100 percent of the unfunded liability, we're approximately 80 percent of the way there. Funding of $400,000 of the $675,000 needed to fund the city's annual equipment replacement budget is included within the base budget, so not fully funding as we'd like, but more than we were able to fund last year. As the city manager said earlier, we have made some positive steps in addressing some of the structural deficiencies of the budget. And then we've got increases for the fire department budget totaling about 9 percent based on their costs and the funding formula that's in place there. On April 28th, the city council met in closed session, as you're all aware, to go over a lengthy list of changes in terms of the structure of the budget, in terms of things that the council.
Pardon me, that wasn't closed session, that was an open session.
Or did I say close, a study session, I'm sorry about that. Study session over at the library to discuss the budget. The council discussed changing, adding new things, new programs that needed to be funded, changing some of the revenue structure and fees associated with the revenue portion of the budget, and then considered a very lengthy list of program and service reductions in terms of looking at how they cut the budget. Council made several changes in terms of what the staff was recommending, provided direction to the staff. We've gone back, we've put this budget document together based on those recommendations. As you can see up here, when we, when we left, when we ran out of steam after several lengthy hours and a lot of really good discussion at that study session, we had left a $7,500 deficit in the budget. Council directed staff to go back and find a reasonable solution to closing that rather small gap. And we have, we're going to be taking that money out of the utility budget for City Hall, the electrical utility budget. We've got some grant funding available from the ABAG Energy Watch program, where we're going to be doing a small IT project with grant funding to put a device in place that will automatically shut down computers, monitors, and printers on the weekends and after hours, and we believe that that will generate about $7,500 annually in terms of savings to the city. So that's how we addressed that minor deficit we were left with. The general fund budget balancing summary up here, this is what you did during the April 28th study session meeting on the budget. You started that evening with a $2.1 million budget deficit. There were about half a million dollars' worth of programs that needed to be funded next year, studies, elections, changes in terms of programs that were a priority that the council and the staff felt it was appropriate to fund. That brought your deficit up to about $2.6 million. You were able to adjust some revenues and make some minor changes within the budget to raise an additional $300,000 in revenue to bring that deficit back down to about $2.4 million. And then you made $1.1 million in reductions, very painful reductions. And over the last eight years, the city has made many, many millions of dollars in reductions. City manager earlier summarized some of what's been done the last three years. As the years go on and we continue to struggle with the economy and the city's budget and the city's finances, I think those of you that have been on the council for a few budgets recognize the fact that those, these cuts that are being presented are becoming more and more painful, and they're getting closer and closer to home in terms of programs that have been cut within the city. So after you did all those three things, you were still left with a $1.3 million budget deficit. The council decided, as it has the last several years, to take the $1.3 million of transfer station revenue that I mentioned earlier and put that into the general fund budget this year to offset the budget deficit. That money historically, in good times, is used to go into the general fund Fund 25 budget, that's the city's general fund capital improvement budget. Currently, in the budget presented to you, there's no additional money budgeted in Fund 25 for general fund capital improvement programs in this community. There are programs that are recommended in the budget, but they're living off and drawing down the existing fund balance there. So that's a significant problem in the future that the city will have to address in its budget problem. That can't go on forever, but this year, we were able to do that and maintain services. To give you some idea, I won't spend a lot of time on this, of where the cuts fell across the board, the departments, 13.1 percent in the administrative services department, bringing that department's three-year cut total up to about 30 percent, 5 percent in the city manager's office, 9.2 in Parks and Recreation, a lighter cut this year for police of 1.8 percent. However, as the city manager mentioned earlier, there's been some fairly significant cuts the last several years in the police department, getting down to the point where this year we were looking to present a budget based on some previous council direction that tried very hard to maintain public safety at the current level. The budget was able to provide some one-time funding. This is out of savings that was generated from last year's budget, used $30,000 of one-time funding for potential special election in November, $90,000 for a revenue measure, $100,000 funding for user fee study, $250,000 towards retiree medical, and half a million dollars for the city's economic uncertainty reserve. The reserve had originally been set up and tried to be maintained at about 10 percent, which is a very low reserve for any city. But as the city's budget has expanded over the years and gotten larger, that 2.5 million that was in that reserve fund is becoming a smaller and smaller portion. So we recommended putting a half a million dollars into that reserve this year to get that back up to at least what I would consider to be a minimum economic uncertainties reserve level. These are some of the highlights in terms of what was cut or added or changed within the budget. So it's a half a million dollars for the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department in terms of an increase to that particular budget. Increased funding for the San Carlos disaster preparedness, that's a full year's funding. In the city manager's office, there was increased funding for community development consultant to fund, to be funded by. Is that?
That's actually construction and demolition for the recycling program.
Excuse me, yeah, construction and development. Reduction of miscellaneous expenses, including conferences, supplies, and outside services. Resume charging for solar permitting fees. In administration, we increased funding for an actuarial study. We reclassified a systems analyst to a senior systems analyst to make up for the fact that we were also reducing the number of systems analysts from three to two. We eliminated four vacant positions, a financial services manager, a systems analyst, a receptionist, and an administrative clerk, that's actually a half-time administrative clerk, half of it being in administration, and half of it being in the parks and rec administrative offices. Reduction in operating expenses throughout IT, HR, and finance. In terms of community development, there's a significant change here, not so much dollar-wise, but philosophically, converting 2.25 outsourced planning positions into two full-time city employees, reclassification of building inspector three to a building inspector one, and a reduction in residential design. By the way, I'd be happy to talk with you, and the department heads are here, I'd be happy to talk with you further about any of these reductions or provide any additional information. I'm trying to go through this quickly for the benefit of the council and the public's time, but still try to get to it. In terms of Parks and Recreation, there were many. The Parks and Recreation Department is a varied department, they provide a wide range of services and programs, so they have a lot of different changes in terms of the budget this year. They eliminated one and a half vacant full-time positions, technically, that really should be more like two. A recreation supervisor that had been, half of which had been eliminated in the last budget, so half was eliminated in this budget, but it's a full position that's been reduced in practical terms. A recreation coordinator position was eliminated, and then the half of the. A recreation coordinator position was eliminated, and then the half of the administrative clerk that they share with Human Resources was eliminated. They reduced dramatically their part-time budget, proposed the closure of the Qantas building and relocating of staff from those offices to the U Center. Reduction in U Center hours, elimination of senior services information and referral program, elimination of funding for lights at the tennis courts, elimination of funding for adult sports, reduction in janitorial services retained. We did retain funding for the special needs program and the Healthy Cities program with the caveat from the council at the budget study session that staff would continue working this year on finding additional outside funding for those programs. And if we were unsuccessful in doing that, that those programs would be brought back next year if we need to consider further cuts for additional discussion. The police department eliminated the PAL Police Athletics League program. They were able to increase revenue as a result of their red light camera program, increased revenue for false alarms and permit fees in the community. The Public Works Department increased funding for full-time public works director. Currently, we have a contractor in that position who, because of the nature of being a contractor, is able to provide those services for a lesser amount than what a full-time public works director would cost the city out in the market of cities. Reduction in outside services in terms of public works and sewer fee increases. These are the positions within the city that were eliminated, the full-time positions that were eliminated within the budget. I've talked about all of these, but that's all of them grouped together and some of the changes. We did add, as I mentioned, the public works director. We're adding two planner positions. So, we're cutting 2.25 contracted planner positions out of the budget and adding two full-time planners. There's no cost to the city. It's the same dollars, but a different method of providing those services to the community. The equipment replacement fund, as I talked about earlier, we've got approximately $400,000 of the $675 of the annual funding needed within the budget. That's an improvement over what we were able to fund last year. We will return in the fall after we've closed the current fiscal year's budget to share with the council any savings that were accumulated in this budget and provide some recommendations to the council how that funding might be used. In the past, we've used it to fully fund the equipment replacement and as well as putting some minor funding into the Fund 25 capital budget. Just to give you an overview of the budget that you're being asked to adopt tonight, the fund balances within the budget for unrestricted. You can see there, the general fund balance would be starting out at $3 million, dropping down to $2 million. The restricted fund balance is shown growing. A lot of that is the GADs fee, 45 money that you're putting in place. So, that's restricted money, and at some point over the next couple of months, we anticipate that a good portion of that reserve will be moved out potentially into some form of trust to begin funding that liability. The revenues contained in the budget for the general fund are $24.3 million. Expenditures, $26.8 million. We'll be transferring into the general fund $3 million from other city funds, including the sewer fund, redevelopment agency funds. We're transferring out approximately half a million dollars from the general fund to other funds, including equipment replacement, Park and Lou, and other items. One-time expenditures within the budget total $220,000. One-time transfers out, $750,000. You can see they're listed there at the bottom in terms of what they are, but that's GADs B and the Economic Uncertainty Reserve. Budget highlights, this is showing you the general fund fund balance over time. As you can see, it's been shrinking in terms of what's budgeted, anticipated budgeted this time last year, $2.6 million down to $2 million. We're projecting that will continue to shrink over the next few years if we don't continue to cut or raise additional revenue. The revenue summary, just to show you again, sales tax and property tax, we discussed that earlier. The expenditure summary, salaries and benefits for the coming year, proposed $14.5 million of the city's $27 million general fund budget. Operating capital outlay is actually declining in the coming year due to budget cuts. The fire budget, as I said earlier, is growing by approximately 9 percent. And this will give you an idea of where the city's spending its general fund dollars. Like most cities, more than half of the city's current general fund expenditures are for police and fire, public safety. About 20 percent of the city's budget is for general governmental. That includes administration, but a lot of other, you know, building maintenance and other functions. Parks and Recreation, 16 percent. It's the police and fire budget within this particular budget year that's growing more than any other category. The 2009 general fund transfers, this is kind of a legacy slide that we've had up there the last few years to clear up some misconceptions in terms of the fact that we show an expenditure number of about $27 million and a revenue number of about $24 million. And some folks that are new to the complexities of governmental budgeting and accounting don't consider that to be a balanced budget, but it's because there are other budgets within the city and other funds, as I mentioned, the sewer fund, which is an enterprise fund, an RDA, and other sources of money that pay the general fund back for services performed for employees. We're not a big enough agency to have a redevelopment agency that is a separate entity that has separate staff, so that agency pays the city for some of its time. The sewer fund pays the city back for time spent in terms of that function. And this slide represents how all those transfers occur back to the general fund. The capital budget, we've got a number of programs that are being presented this year. Up here, they're included in the budget. They include projects in the sewer replacement arena in terms of street maintenance. There's money in there for building and facility improvements, traffic signal, street and sidewalk improvements, parks improvements, a synthetic turf project at Highlands, as well as a number of projects within the redevelopment fund. As you recall, this last year, we adopted, the city issued about $7 million in RDA bond debt for new RDA projects. Those are all listed within the existing capital budget. And then, there's a whole host of unfunded projects, and this is really, maybe could be described as the tip of the iceberg in terms of the projects that I think this community would like to see, would certainly welcome if they had the resources. They total $16 million. And this year, we included in the budget no dollars to go towards most of those projects. So, that gives you an idea of what's looming and some of the future challenges in terms of the city's budget. As the city manager talked about earlier, we are sort of coming out of what could be described as a moderately good economic period during which time the city struggled financially and had to make a number of cuts and reductions. We're going into a cycle right now that I think everybody agrees is a financial downturn, maybe not a recession, maybe a recession. Currently, we're budgeting our revenues to grow in the coming years by 3 percent, as I started the presentation off with. It's feasible right now that things could be worse than we're anticipating in the next year or two. We hope not, but it's possible. Certainly, the housing market isn't particularly healthy. The sales tax growth we saw in the fourth quarter last year was not healthy. In fact, it was, they were recessionary-type numbers. The state is dealing with a $17 billion budget deficit right now. The state has a nasty habit of finding a way to have local government help them pay for their budget deficits so they don't have to cut. We do have some protections that are in place now that weren't in place in the past during past downturns, but we'll have to see what the state does. We do anticipate that they'll probably find a way to take anywhere between, you know, $10,000 and $350,000 from the city of San Carlos next year. Fire costs continue to grow as well as increases for employee and retiree medical. Equipment replacement funding, as I've mentioned, is not 100 percent funded. All the city's current labor contracts are up for renewal, so we anticipate some changes there. But as of today, those are unknown changes. And those are just a few of the challenges we face. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about the budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Muckey. Council, do you have questions at this point in time? Or it's council's pleasure to take public comment at this point? Okay, I have three speaker slips for the budget. If anybody else would like to speak, you're certainly welcome to approach the podium. And if you do feel inclined to speak, please fill out a speaker slip after you do. If somebody else has already talked about your point of view, you can profess support for that point of view. You don't necessarily have to take the whole two minutes to repeat it. With that, I'll start with Joe Rothengast.
I'd like Darwin to go first. Is that around you? Darwin, please go.
Sure.
Hello, my name is Darwin Patnold. I live at 3353 Britton Avenue, and I vote. And I am a tennis player, but I am not speaking on behalf of the San Carlos Tennis Club. In fact, I don't play tennis at night. So, I'm speaking because I feel there are some valid concerns that tennis players and the other people might have. And I ask that you consider modifying the budget, which was recommended by the staff, so that there can be more compromise and some feasibility of some tennis court lighting. You know, when tennis courts and other facilities for athletics are turned off at night, so to speak, crime among young people, vandalism, et cetera, goes up. And I know that the other sports didn't get their lights turned off, but there are many young people playing tennis. It's the fastest-growing of the participatory sports in America. And so, I wish that you would try to do something to compromise in some way, to show some imagination, to keep the lights on for at least part of the time, part of the year, some courts, et cetera, rather than just rubber-stamping a staff recommendation. Now, I noticed in the staff report that there were many cuts of personnel. And needless to say, when a corporation gets lean and mean and has layoffs, stock value goes up. And in a city, we should take a hard look at making those same kinds of cuts to improve the quality of the city. Being lean and mean isn't being bad. It's good in governing, it's good in administration of corporations, and I even say it's good in tennis. Last night, I drove around at 10 o'clock, and in the city's parks, I noticed that inside the locked restrooms, the lights were all on, very bright. So, what the city needs is not turning off the tennis court lights, it needs an energy audit to see how it's currently using its lighting.
You have two minutes, so if you could please conclude your comments, I'd appreciate it.
So, please do your best to reach some sort of compromise in terms of keeping some lights on, on some courts in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Joe Rothengast, there's a couple speakers that would like to give their two minutes to Joe. I'll try to be a little lenient with the time, but it won't add up to all the different speakers' time. If the other speakers would like to take their two minutes, you're welcome to it.
That's all right. I'll try to be quick. Darwin's obviously hit some of the salient points here. I would like to present the, all of the city council members with a petition signed by members of the San Carlos Tennis Club. To be entered into the record. And, you know, I'm also a resident. I'm not just representing the San Carlos Tennis Club. We have a public relations director that has been down to some of the meetings, and I'm also, you know, just a concerned citizen. But I will mention that the San Carlos Tennis Club has a lot of, over 100 members are from San Carlos. They are our neighbors from Belmont and Redwood City. We use their facilities, they use ours. So, these people do a lot of work, put in a lot of man-hours to improve our Groyo Park. You know, the club has donated over the last decade $56,000 to the city for the improvement of courts. I personally, you know, go out and fix the nets. We buy the nets, we fix the nets, we put them up. You know, I recall voting for, you know, a $10,000 resurface at Highlands, so there's an awful lot of money that's been, and effort and labor, you know, that's been put in, painstaking work, putting up net screens so that the windows block. You know, and I think, considering, you know, when a park can literally light, you know, light itself, you do have to start to look for creative solutions. I mean, it's akin to like a Broadway production saying, "Well, you know, in order to maintain our production team, you know, we're really sorry, but we're not going to be able to show any more, you know, productions to you patrons of the arts at night. We only have matinees from here on in." I mean, you know, it's, it just, the absurdity of this, it's hard to believe I'm actually up here even talking about something like this. You know, all the places I've lived and all the, you know, countries I've visited, you know, industrialized nations, to see the, you know, basic athletic facilities turned off at night is just shocking to me. You know, and we're in the middle of an obesity epidemic in this country, and San Carlos is no, is no exception to that. You know, I think that shutting down activity for adults, I mean, you know, tennis is all ages. We have kids that can play, we have older people that can play, there's varying levels, so you can play, you know, at great intensity for great workouts. You can, it's a social thing, and, you know, shutting down those lights will hurt the social fabric of the town. I do think it will hurt people's fitness levels. I believe that, you know, the attractiveness of buying a home in San Carlos could be affected by this. I'm concerned about real estate prices dropping even more as a result of the fact that we don't have lighting facilities. And you're talking about more than just tennis, like shutting down basketball for adults and volleyball, and, you know, I think that you're going to have to look hard, I'm urging you to look hard at some, you know, more innovative and creative solutions, looking at, you know, cuts into, you know, personnel, administration. I've made a study of organizations, and all organizations become, you know, more concerned and more focused on self-sustaining, you know, self-sustainment rather than the actual original mission that they're designed to serve. And that, you know, that happens in the private sector and corporations, and there we have competitive market dynamics, you know, to keep them in check. You know, in government, you know, I think there's going to be a lot more room to make cuts, even though there's been a lot mentioned here. I mean, you know, you're talking about basic, we got to turn out the lights, guys? I mean, you know, Mr. Mayor, you yourself are like Mr. Outdoors. I've looked at your profile, you know, I've met you before. You know, you've been involved with all these youth leagues and stuff. I mean, you're going to really tell us that you're going to shut the lights down on the tennis players here? I mean, I can't see that that's your, that you'd want that to be your legacy. In addition, you know, we can help. I think the club is trying to help. I mean, I've been talking to my neighbor across the street, he's an executive at Sun Power. We're talking about possibly, you know, maybe getting some solar panels installed to help offset the prices, but this, you know, this abrupt, like, shutting everything down July 1st is, it's come up fast, it doesn't make any sense. It's a miniscule amount, and this, you know, you're talking huge numbers here, and $15,000 just doesn't seem like an awful lot of money. It seems like you can come up with more creative solutions to, you know, to get the budget to light the--
I'm going to have to ask you to conclude your comments, please.
Sure, sure. Well, I think those are most of the points, and, but, you know, we do urge you to let sanity prevail here in town. And, you know, as my friend says to me, when I start to talk about things that seem insane, he asks, "Are you beginning to scare yourself because you're starting to scare us?" Thank you.
Thank you very much. Shearston Barley?
As I mentioned earlier, I'm also here to ask you to reconsider the closing down of the tennis lights. I noticed in the, in the list of budget amendments, it says except by permit or fee, which maybe leaves some loophole open, but it doesn't sound like for individuals, that's very helpful. I can't see myself applying for a permit to play tennis on a regular basis, so I don't know what that means. I do know what a structural deficit means, and that means if you shut down the lights this round, they're not coming back on, and I have some concerns about that. I also believe that you've got, you've got a bias here. Let's say there's a disproportionate impact on working adults when you talk about doing things like this. Right now, it's not so obvious. As we go into the winter months, it will be. Those of us who are not able to play during the day will be heavily impacted by this decision, and I think that would be a shame. I was part of the general plan visioning exercise, and we have some lofty goals here, and I don't feel like this particular cut is consistent with our notion of being the city of good living and some of the other loftier goals that we have here. From tonight, I learned that we've figured out how to save $7,500 by shutting off the monitors at night. I think that's fantastic. I think there are probably some other ways we could do things like that to the earlier gentleman's-- gentleman's point about maybe an energy audit. I've learned that we have $500,000 going into an economic uncertainty reserve. This line item that we're talking about tonight is $14,000. And I've also learned we're spending $1.7 million on artificial turf at Highlands. I don't know anything about that, other than that's a whole lot more than $14,000. And I think there must be some alternatives, so whether that's allowing one set of courts to remain available for us, installing some sort of metering so that we can swipe a card like the Redwood City parking folks and be able to play.
I'm going to have to ask you to conclude your comments, please.
Yeah, I am concluding, thank you. I think there are some options that we could come up with that would, that would allow us to keep playing, and I'd ask you to please consider those and not adopt a budget as it stands today, so that there's an opportunity to reconsider that line item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Be followed by Heinz Hoffman. If the, I'll call the next speaker if you could be ready to speak right away. Heinz Hoffman will be next.
Heinz Hoffman, right here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I had Doug McIlwath.
He's not present.
Mayor, please, go ahead.
Okay. Mayor of City Council, Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. It was last minute for me to come up here, I don't have a prayer of speech. I do want to say I'm a 10-year member of the San Carlos Tennis Club, a 19-year resident of the city, and I'm also a 28-year veteran of the San Francisco Police Department. If you speak to most psychologists, sociologists and so forth, they tell humans to find a hobby, find a sport. All sports is very healthy, and it's very, it's great for the environment, it's great for the families, it's a way of relaxing and enjoying life. And I've lived, lived near the Highlands Courts for 19 years. I've seen those courts packed from 5:00 on. Most, majority of the public works from 9:00 to 5:00. They get home, they throw in their tennis clothes, and we only have nine good working courts in the city. And I do have to say that it's, the majority of all the tennis players I've met, there's over 300 in the club, they're good citizens, they're good for the environment, and many of them volunteer hundreds of hours to the city to make this a better place. I do want to mention, being in the police world, if you look at Doyle Drive, which is the entrance to the Golden Gate Bridge, one traffic accident will create, and shutting down one lane on Doyle Drive, the entrance to Golden Gate Bridge, will shut, will create a backlog for about four miles on Lombard Street and Van Ness Avenue. I use that as an example because if you eliminate all the courts usage at nighttime in San Carlos, you will have a huge impact on your surrounding cities, and I believe in the good neighbor policy. All the teams and leagues and the captains will take these teams, they will start using Beersford Park in San Mateo, they'll start utilizing Foster City Lit Courts and Red Morton and Redwood City. They cannot handle the impact of San Carlos tennis players going to those cities, and you will have other council members calling you, emailing you, and complaining regarding the same thing. So I strongly urge that you do find a solution to this. I agree with all the speakers before me, and again, it's a city of good living, let's keep it going, and I thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. Julia Morton, I believe, followed by Louise Barnfield. Is Julia Morton or Wharton here? Sorry? You wrote it quickly, I take it, yeah.
Hello, thank you for letting me speak. I'm a San Carlos homeowner for over 10 years. I love San Carlos. I'm also a tennis player and belong to San Carlos Tennis Club. But I'm not just talking on behalf of the tennis club, I'm also talking on behalf of people who don't belong to tennis clubs. But I live right by Burton Park, and I see people, you know, just go out and take their kids for the first time, do some exercise and play tennis. So I'm trying to talk on behalf of everyone, not just the San Carlos Tennis Club, and I agree with all the speakers before me, how important it is to do sports, and that, especially for working people who can't do the exercise during the day, and especially with the hot weather we're getting, it's really nice to get out at night and be able to play tennis. Tennis is also, as you know, a sport that doesn't cost money. It's not like you have to pay a fee to belong to a soccer club or something, or baseball or something. So it's a, it's a sport that anybody can play at any age, and it's really important to allow us to be able to do that. I don't know if the proposal is for all the lights, but I just wanted to mention, I know at Burton Park, you know, there's also basketball near there, too, and people go out at night, they play the basketball, they play the tennis, and the lights are really important, so I hope you'll reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Louise Barnfield, followed by, I think it's Al Russell, or Rinsel.
Thank you for letting me speak. I agree with all the previous speakers regarding the tennis lights at San Carlos. I am a member of the San Carlos Tennis Club. I'm a resident of San Carlos for five years. I've been playing in the San Carlos area for eight years, and I agree with everything that's been said, but I speak personally for myself because I believe there are many more like me. I'm a full-time working adult. If you adopt this principle, then you are preventing me from playing tennis pretty much any weekday whatsoever, particularly during the winter months, and that's my main social activity and my main source of physical exercise, and believe me, I need it. I request that you seriously consider appealing this consideration, at least until you've discussed it fully with the San Carlos Tennis Club, to come across some sort of realistic method in which payment can be made for something that is an individual, an adult, ad hoc activity. It's not like an organization who can request for fields to be lit for a particular event or not. This is important to the entire community on an individual basis. If you don't, then realistically, I will be forced to go and play my tennis elsewhere with friends in Belmont, in Redwood City, in other places where courts are lit. If I do so, I will dine and I will drink after our matches at those places, at those establishments. I will take my, my business to their supermarkets to shop on the way to the club or on the way home, and for many, many reasons, I feel this is a huge detriment to our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Al, is it Rinsel or Russell, followed by Linda Burrows.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I'm up here on behalf of an organization, it's a 19-year-old organization known as the San Carlos Seniors, San Carlos Service Clubs for Seniors, which involves the San Carlos Kiwanis, San Carlos Lions Club, and San Carlos Rotary Club. 19 years ago, I was one of the founding members of this organization. This is a food distribution program for seniors. It's been in existence for 19 years. It's basically volunteer-run, however, for 19 years, we have always had the benefit of a coordinator, a staff coordinator, and this position is being eliminated this year. That's a 20-hour-a-week position, but it's very important and very vital. We actually serve about 60 to 70 seniors, and we, what we do is we distribute food to needy seniors, some of which, of whom are shut-ins. So we have a food delivery program in addition to a distribution program at the senior center. This program has been working out of the senior center for 19 years, and we're requesting that you please take a look at that elimination, that staff position. This really does require coordination. All of these clients are, have to be screened. They have to meet certain qualifications in regards to income and residency, and not only that, but they need somebody to talk to. What we're talking about, people that don't get out, people in their late 70s, 80s, and so on. So we're asking you to please look at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Linda Burrows, followed by Matt Standor.
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I moved to San Carlos some 15 years ago. I live on Portofino Court. As I looked at the reductions overall in the Parks and Recreation Department, it saddened me greatly because a disproportionate number of the reductions are being made at the, with our children being sacrificed in terms of services. I'm really concerned that we're moving from the city of good living to the city of benign neglect. You know, I look at the list here and reductions in athletic staff, closing the youth center, reduce youth part-time persons, eliminate special needs, janitorial service, landscaping maintenance at Heather School, you know, eliminate youth jobs, eliminate PAL. I just have to think that the board can find some other place to make cuts, and the things that I personally highlighted only add up to $78,000, but make a huge difference. So beyond the tennis courts, you know, it doesn't seem appropriate for the city of good living to, to make these kinds of cuts at the sacrifice of, of our families. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Matt Standor, followed by Rick Albert.
Thank you. I'm Matt Standor, also a San Carlos resident, here today to ask you to reevaluate the tennis court lighting situation and to find some way to keep those tennis court lights on, whether it's subsection of the tennis courts that we can keep lit, or whether we have some metering option or something so that individuals can continue to play tennis after daylight. You've heard several very good points for keeping those on, so I'm not going to go through and walk through the scores of those points again. However, I think one of them stands out in particular, and that is the idea of all of the San Carlos tennis players basically finding other cities to go play tennis in and also to spend their money to go out afterwards, to meet beforehand, to do shopping and those things. Certainly for me, if the tennis courts in San Carlos aren't on, I will find other places to play tennis at night, primarily not in the summer, but in the wintertime, and those other cities will get those, get those dollars, the stores will do better, they'll get the tax money and those things. So I think that's certainly something that I asked you to consider, as well as all the litany of other points that you've heard from the other people supporting that issue today. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Rick Albert, followed by my last speaker slip, Doug McIlwath.
Thanks for providing the time for us to address you about these issues. I'm also a tennis player, and I second everything that's said about the lighting situation, but my primary point I wanted to make here has to do with the Adult Basketball League. I've been an adult basketball player in the, or a player in the Adult Basketball League for several years, and it's an extremely well-run program and terrific compared to some of the other cities around here. When I heard that it was going to be cut out to save supposedly $57,000 in expenses, I did my best to ferret out the information that was available as far as the stated expenses of the league and the revenue that was generated by, by our annual dues. And I can't make those numbers add up. Maybe you've discovered that there was a problem in what was presented to the council as far as the revenue and expense numbers on the Adult Basketball League, but when I add the numbers up, it's, it appears plainly to me that it's a program that makes money, and I would really like to see a better financial justification for your decision to eliminate the program. For instance, the public documents that I could find showed that the revenue generated by the, by the Adult Basketball League was $42,000 a year, and it stated in the same document that by eliminating the program, you would save $57,000 a year. To me, that obviously implies that the expenses of the program are $99,000 a year. Sounds reasonable until you consider that we play 84 nights for three hours in those nights. In other words, 84 times a year, we play for three hours. In the gym, during those three hours, we have four people working, two referees, two scorekeepers. If you divide the $99,000 expense by 84 nights, the city appears to be spending $1,600 per night to hire those people.
I have to ask you to conclude your comments.
Okay. To me, those numbers don't make any sense at all. If you simply take the dues that we pay, $44,000 a year, apply it to the 84 nights, you've got $500 a night to spend to support adult basketball. I know that there's other expenses that could be in there, like rent and insurance and some of the overhead of the administrators, but that isn't apparently added to the expenses. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Doug McIlwath. If there's any other public comment, please come over toward the podium, you can fill out a public speaker slip when you're done. Please. That's right, go ahead, you can give it to the city clerk when you're finished.
Hi, Doug McIlwath. I'm a resident of Mountain View. I've been a long-term, longtime member of the San Carlos Tennis Club, and while I arrived a little late here tonight, I'm pretty familiar with all of the ideas and proposals and things, and I think we've probably heard quite a few of them, that, especially the solar-powered concept, as well as the metering lights and/or USTA team fees for court rentals. But I think as a kind of a final option is, I would at least recommend that we can shelve this part of the proposal for, you know, 90, 120, 180 days, to give us some time to come up with these, to see how viable they may be. And I'm saying this in the backdrop of the idea that, I mean, as we're coming to the summer solstice, we're talking about an hour's worth of lights a night. So the amount of savings that you'd get over the next four to six months would be miniscule, and I think once a policy's implemented, it would be much harder to get it reversed, especially if we are able to come up with some positive sort of win-win solutions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, City Council. I'm personally speaking on behalf of tennis, but agree with the need to maintain the other sports, including the outdoor lights at the basketball courts at Burton. There's always people on them. Specifically, at the last council meeting, I appreciate, oh, first of all, I appreciate all the cuts you have made in salaries, administrative, et cetera. But just for example, at the last council meeting, you approved a fairly large raise for an employee you're going to keep on for another six months. It seems like you talk about you're not going to do it, and then you end up voting for it. Except for one council member, usually it's Matt, who's objecting to adding a new position or raising someone's salary. That's about all I have to say. I'm in favor of remaining, keeping the tennis lights on.
Thank you very much.
How's it going? Just want to say thank you for letting me speak, and I'm actually, I'm here to talk about also keeping the lights on at Burton Park, as well as the adult sports programs, because me and all of my friends have, the last couple of years, been taking part in the adult sports program since we've reached 18, and we just, we would hate to see it go because we want to be those guys 20 years from now that are still playing in the league, still partaking in it, because we just think it's a cool tradition. Like, we really get along with the people that have been in the league already for 10, 15 years, and we just want to keep that sort of commodity going on. Also, with the, the lights at Burton Park, you're not only harming tennis, you're harming the basketball players as well. Like everyone said, most people work full-time during the day. If you cut the lights, how are most people supposed to play basketball in the evenings, as well as tennis? And then I'm also, I didn't mention, I've been a part-time employee with the San Carlos Youth Center for the last two years, and I know I'm more aware of the, sort of the healthy city thing and promoting healthy living for the kids and stuff. By cutting adult programs, I think that's sending the wrong message to the kids down the line, because I'm also a nutrition major at Cal Poly, San Luis Obispo, and it's well proven that if one parent is obese, or two parents obese, there's a significant chance that that child's going to end up obese. And by cutting adult sports and adult activities outside, that's really only going to increase the chance of obesity, that's not going to make a parent healthier, and so that's not really sending the best message to their kids either, when they see that their parents are spending the evenings inside versus being outside, being active, and stuff like that. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. All right. Steph, any further comments before we have council discussion or questions?
I don't believe we have any.
I don't believe we have any additional comments at this time, but we would be available to answer any questions you might have.
So council for discussion on budget? Maybe you'd like to, if you'd like to begin? Anybody have something to say? Councilor or not?
We'll go with just a couple of brief points. Mr. Monty, one of the points you did bring up was the Healthy Cities Training Program. As I recall, the budget workshop, we had, or at least my understanding was that we agreed to fund it for an additional year, but no further. And the comments I heard tonight was, we'll try to give them some time, but we'll probably fund it. So I wanted to get clarification on that.
I had the same recollection of the meeting, that you were going to continue funding this year. If additional funding couldn't be found from outside the city for the program, you wanted to see it brought back next year for potential reduction. I don't think the council can make a decision in advance, other than to say you want to see it again if it's not funded.
All right. I'll take that. I'll just go through one other issue. The, there was kind of a 27, eliminate the special needs program. We didn't quite eliminate it. We said that there was okay because we did a fund increase, or there was a funding increase that went and made it revenue neutral. So it shows up as a, we approved the money, so I'm curious how that is reflected.
It's reflected by a 200-plus percent fee increase to pay for the full cost of the program.
Okay. But overall, the issue was that we did indeed allow the program to continue because it became revenue neutral?
Correct. And we'll have to see over the course of the year, monitor those fees as they come in to make sure that that is indeed the case.
So I will, Mr. Mayor, just in time, I'll try to conclude with just a couple of quick points. I want to acknowledge all the folks who have come out and spoken. I want to acknowledge Mr. Weiss, Brian, Jeff, and all the folks for putting in some very hard work on this budget. I'll also express, you know, as a first-time councilman, that this has been a frustrating process. I am not happy with the documents as they've been presented, and I'm not happy with the product that we're being given to vote upon. There is a lot under the budget that I don't feel we have had an appropriate exposure to as council. I would like very strongly to push for a true zero-based budget next year. There's a lot of discussion in this budget about what are we going to cut? What are we going to cut? I want to change that discussion to what are we actually going to spend? And we only spend up to our limit, and after that, it's over. Recognizing the chair's prerogative, I would like to recommend, moving forward, that the city council form a finance committee that meets on a more regular basis with the city to go over these things. To a large extent, the budget was created by terrific and hard-working staff, but it's presented to council sort of at the last minute, and we're sort of given a, you know, you're behind the eight ball, make some cuts and figure out how to make it work. I don't like that way of going, and I prefer a longer-term exposure to what our finances are and how we should start to put them together. To the issues that have been talked about tonight, one of the, I want to tell you that I want to acknowledge everybody who came out here and spoke. I know it's, you know, to some folks, it's fairly intimidating coming up here. We're sitting up here on this dais and we're all wearing neckties and look fairly nasty, and we're trying to do something.
Keep yourself.
Yeah, I look pretty nasty. Frankly, I was more worried that you guys would all have tennis balls and start pelting me. So I want to acknowledge that. And I also want to acknowledge that a lot of folks have written in saying, you know, I'm paying property taxes, this is the City of Good Living, and you guys have to be just total knuckleheads to do this. I get it. I acknowledge it. Frankly, I don't like making these cuts either. But there was one statement that came out that I want to pull out that struck with me, which was let sanity prevail. I am looking at a budget, and candidly, I think, you know, those of us here have worked for several months on this thing, and the issue of let sanity prevail has to be addressed. We are the City of Good Living. I will tell you that we have been the city living beyond our means. We have, we can legitimately, as a council, say we have made tough cuts, we are doing a very rough gig, and we're going to balance the budget. I'm looking at the constituents and saying, guess what? There's an iceberg. We're going to hit it in 2011, and we're going to name it Vallejo. And the choice is turn or die. I don't feel I'm doing my job unless we come up with a sustainable budget and can avoid the iceberg. To some extent, the directives to, can we find money here? Can we find money there? Can we push stuff back and forth? Is truly rearranging deck furniture. And I'm using those metaphors very literally, which is why I'm pushing for a greater finance look by the council, greater oversight, and really getting down to what, as a city, do we want to invest in. Folks have written in saying, I pay a lot of property taxes. I agree. And for a lot of folks are going, you pay your property taxes, you pay your mortgage, this is the one thing you enjoy. If we take 100% of your property taxes, it does not cover our public safety bill. We're in tough shape, folks. I have no objection, and I would love to direct everybody who wants tennis and wants lights, I would direct them, let's work with Barry Weiss, let's find out something that works. The council has shown flexibility in saying, if you've got a proposal that works, let's do it. Let's make it revenue neutral. You want additional help, I'll personally volunteer to help in that respect. But I will not, by virtue of where I'm sitting here, vote to increase the budget in any fashion. If we open up the budget for the discussion, from my perspective, we need to go in here and cut harder. I've said this before, and I've said, and I'll say it once again, I don't like the fact that we're going to come back next year looking at yet another million, two in cuts. It's the wrong thing to do. I think every city employee and every person who enjoys a program here is going to be looking over their shoulder, wondering what's next. If we're going to do cuts, let's do it. Let's do it once. Let's do it to a sustainable level, and then let's move forward and build. It's frustrating. I'm angry. I understand and empathize with everybody. I lettered in tennis in high school, and it's annoying, and I share your anger. And I yield to the chair.
Thank you. Councilor Brokha?
Based on what I heard tonight, I think I probably have some questions first for staff. I heard somebody mention about a solar-powered option or a metering option for the lighting, and if Mr. Weiss could come up and speak to that. And I was also intrigued by the idea that we do have the summer months perhaps before lighting really becomes an issue in the winter months. And could anything done, could anything be done in terms of studying this and avoiding this trouble with the $15,000 item?
And just to that point too, if you could speak to if there's ever any overhead involved in turning on the lights? In other words, if there was some funding that came forward from the private sector to help pay for this, is that a, is that flick of a switch, or is there overhead involved as well?
Thank you. Barry Weiss, Parks Recreation Director. I believe I heard three points in there, and I'll answer all three, and then let me know if I missed anything. The solar option, first I heard of it was tonight, when the gentleman came up to the dais. And if that private vendor wants to install those solar panels to help, we would welcome that. We don't have the money to put it in ourselves. Second thing, the coin-operated or the credit card-operated, I've operated those types of mechanisms in other cities, and they are not cost-recoveries, they're not revenue-neutral. They're a control measure. We're looking at a charge of $20 an hour. I doubt if somebody's going to walk in very often and run their credit card through and put $20 an hour in. Those do not pay for themselves. Typically, I don't know of any that have. I'm sure they're out there. Also, we don't have the upfront money to put that in. As far as the overhead to turn on the lights, it's not very complicated. We would have our staff set up that day and go from there.
So if money was forthcoming from some, you know, external source, if the revenue was raised by, say, the, you know, tennis club and others that are concerned and wanted to pay for that on a yearly basis, if something...
Right. If someone were to come up with $15,000, we'd have the lights on every night. If they came up with less than that, we'd have that prorated amount. I've had discussions with the tennis club to see how that might work with them facilitating collection of some funds. There's obviously an issue with that because they're not necessarily in a position to play that role, but we have had some discussions. But it comes down to dollars.
And so, just, we have Director Weiss up here. Are there also currently, is there capital improvement funds to tennis courts down the road that I read about also in the budget in future?
Yes, the Burton Park tennis courts, we have $300,000 budgeted. We're developing plans and specs now and hope to go out to bid within a month, go out to bid within a month and rebuild those courts. They're past the point of resurfacing. We've resurfaced them so many times that, quite honestly, no contract will resurface them again because they'll split right away.
Thank you.
So what I've heard so far is the metering option doesn't, that's more a controlling the light switch operation than it is trying to become revenue-neutral.
Correct.
You'd have to study the solar-powered option more, and you couldn't do that in the next three, four months if we were to...
Yeah. And again, that would be contingent on that private vendor paying for that.
So it'd be a capital improvement cost that either the city would have to pay for or the tennis club would have to pay for.
And I'd have to see what that really entails. But yeah, we look at anything.
Okay. And then one other question, steering away from the tennis, it was mentioned about adult basketball league being revenue, the revenue and expense numbers not making sense to that person who obviously is limited in some of the materials perhaps available without, you know, studying it in depth and coming down to City Hall and asking for everything. Could you speak to that?
I'm clear on the question.
Well, the question of the speaker was that to that person, it appeared that the Adult Basketball League makes $42,000 a year instead of being in a deficit. And so I would question you if you could straighten out what those numbers are. And just perhaps on both of these subjects, just a more general question, if you will, fees for service. I, you know, our building department pretty much runs on fees for service as a planning department. So why can't we do that more with Parks and Rec? You know, we've got all these programs, people want them, obviously. And obviously, if you're doing some of these sports that don't require you to belong to a country club or a, you know, a weightlifting facility or something like that, is it all that unreasonable to expect the city to, you know, have the city provide the infrastructure and the management, but ask the citizens who want to use those kinds of things, pay for it in full?
Again, I think I heard a three-part question, I'll attempt to answer all three. We do charge fees at a lot of programs. Some are small fees, some are large fees. Adult softball, it's, you know, $700 and some dollars that we charge. Day camps are $200 and some dollars for a session. Other fees, of course, are smaller, and we do look for cost recovery in areas that we can. In fact, philosophically, we're different than a lot of Parks and Recreation departments. A lot of Parks and Recreation departments charge as low as they can get, as low as they can, with the thought being to entice a lot of people to come in. We take the other approach. We charge our fees according to what the market will bear, and then for those who can't afford it, we subsidize behind with scholarships, et cetera. And we have both donations that come directly to the city as well as to the foundation that help with that. So that's, so we do charge fees. As far as adult basketball, according to the budget figures, we bring in 30, we're budgeted for $31,200 in revenue. Not every session fills up completely, of course, and budgeted for $54,000 in expenses. So it's not revenue-neutral there. Can that vary from season to season? Absolutely. But those are the budget figures that we're working with. As far as, you know, could we charge, raise the fees and pay, you know, make it revenue-neutral? Theoretically, absolutely. We do have two issues. The first issue is, it is becoming more difficult now, we're finding out to get into the schools next year for adult activities, and we can only play adult basketball and adult volleyball in the school gyms, because we don't have a gymnasium that's run by the city for adults. And let me just interject here too. This budget cut of $57,000 involves not only basketball, it involves volleyball, it involves one softball league, it involves youth basketball that we no longer offer, involves training and that kind of stuff. But it's more than just basketball. But the other factor, if we were to increase the fees, we only have one staff person left in the athletic unit. We took out the management position, the mid-management position, the recreation supervisor. We took out the halftime clerical support that that department, that unit had, and we took out the part-time staff support that unit had to come in and do things like put together schedules and that type of thing. We have, we are left, other than the people who actually open the gym or turn on the lights or keep score at the softball games, we have one person left. And that person will do the facilitation and coordination of all the athletic fields, the tennis courts, the youth center gymnasium for youth sports programs, the sports camps and the sports classes that we do through contract. So we've only got one person. I'm sure I'm forgetting something. They'll hit me right in the head as soon as I end here, what else they're doing. But we've only got one person. So even if we could raise the fees and make, say, adult basketball revenue-neutral, I don't have the bandwidth on staffing in order to administer that program.
Thank you very much.
Director Weiss, while you're there, could you speak about the position that affects the seniors' food program?
Yes, that is a halftime position that runs, let me, if you give me one second, I want to pull up my notes here, so... That is a position, it's halftime at the adult center. They coordinate volunteer recruitment, they coordinate the senior food programming, specifically caring cupboard as well as some other smaller types of food programs, particularly for home-bound seniors, community food drives at the adult center. They also assist with the trips programs and the special events for seniors at the adult center. And again, when you have any, we only have X amount of dollars to be able to spend, and we had to come up with some proposed...
What's the dollar amount on that one?
I'm sorry?
What's the dollar amount on that one?
That dollar amount is $30,675. That position is currently filled, it's not vacant, and that person will lose their job.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I thought, I was continuing with questions. I don't mind you segueing in, but that was my next question is on that very item. Please. And I thought another staff person was going to have to come up and answer that. I didn't realize Mr. Weiss was in charge of that. So I do have a question on that, and that is, as you probably know, I'm very much aware of the Peninsula Volunteers Group, and they do some very similar kinds of things. Is there any possibility of having our program enveloped into theirs? In other words, we allow them to use our facility as a satellite for the county services they provide to seniors all over the county?
We do a lot of partnering with groups like that. I don't know about that specific group. Donna may help me, but we do partner with lots of groups for that kind of thing, to deliver services. If you remember, last year, we eliminated the information and referral services because the county has that. And while it's not ideal, again, we needed to balance the budget, and so we do refer people to the county for information and referral services. But we need somebody to oversee the caring cupboard program, help coordinate that, as well as other volunteer activities. We have three main areas where we use the volunteers, and the adult center being one of them. And it does take coordination.
Okay, thank you. I would just say to that, you know, I'll discuss some other things, but if it comes down to us needing to actually cut that program, then perhaps we could have staff look at, you know, make contact with Peninsula Volunteers and see if there's some way we can resurrect that program through coordination with Peninsula Volunteers. They're located in Menlo Park, although they're not part of the Menlo Park city government, but they are located in Menlo Park.
If I could just, just for one clarification point, which, again, we like that whole approach. She not only coordinates volunteer recruitment, she also works with the food programs, the food drives, and special events, and the trips. So it's a multifaceted job.
Sure, I imagine it is. Okay. Thank you. So that's all my questions for staff. Do you want me to go into comments as Omar?
If anybody else has a question for Dr. Weiss at this point, Diamond Park and Rec, that'd be good time, probably.
I do have just one quick question, Mr. Mayor. I was looking at the City of San Carlos financial policies, as it's outlined here, and on page two, item number nine, fees and charges will be set at a level... two, item number nine, fees and charges will be set at a level that fully supports the total direct and indirect cost of the activity, including administrative overhead and appreciation in accordance with the city's fees. I would love to, if there is something, to show the fees that the Parks and Rec Department costs or charges versus this stated policy. How much are these fees actually covering? So it's a request, I don't expect you to have those papers tonight, but I'd like to see those and make them available to the folks in the city to see if we're subsidizing something or not.
Just so I can do it right the first time, can you restate that again, please?
If you look in our, I'm sorry.
Cost recovery.
Cost recovery. Huh? Cost recovery. If you look on our financial policies, item number nine under section B, revenue policies.
Okay.
I'm looking over at Jeff saying it's page 20 of our attachment. So I would like to see the fee structure for Parks and Recreation in light of this. If you charge 10 bucks for something, but it actually costs $30 to deliver that service, let's get some visibility on that.
Sure.
Thank you.
So do you want?
There's no other questions for Director Weiss at this point in time. Would you continue on?
Okay. So I've had my questions answered. I would just speak very quickly to the comment of Mr. Ahmad regarding the policies, and those, my understanding anyways, is those are policy goals, they're not necessarily policy directives. And so while we try to do that, and when we go over fees and staff presents us with fees, there's a lot of fees that you could say are out of whack, if you will, and it's because they've fallen behind over the years. To jump right up to what it costs in recovery would, you know, hit people over the head too hard, so we tend to back off a little bit. We also have to be mindful of what, as Mr. Weiss commented, what will the market bear? So it's not always cost recovery. So I've had all my questions answered, and I see that these ideas that were brought up by the tennis club, while they are good ideas, and I think they deserve some further research and looking into, I don't see that being the answer to necessarily keeping the lights on. Same thing with the program Mr. Russell talked about. I've given an idea for maybe continuing that program in the future, but I don't see that happening in the next six months. So I'm going to go back to what I suggested before at the, when we're looking at the draft, and this is not comfortable to say, but I think we need to cut a position, and that position would save us $200,000. I'm looking in our binder under City Manager Department and the tasks of that position. And I don't see that cutting that position while having an impact surely on the city manager's workload and perhaps some other personnel in City Hall, I don't see it impacting our citizens, many of whom are sitting here in the audience tonight saying, "Why are you turning off the lights for our basketball and tennis?" If this position were eliminated, it's simply not going to impact the average taxpayer, the average homeowner, the average business owner. This person deals with the big projects that are listed here, climate protection, Palo Alto Medical Foundation development, which is, you know, we've been through that and it's mostly completed, athletic fields issue, survey of San Carlos residents, and potential revenue measure. I could see those things being taken up by others in city staff positions. Services as a city manager and the city manager's absence, that sometimes goes to police chief, it goes to many individuals, it's not always this position. And there's, you know, there's just other things listed here, I'm not going to bother to go through them, you all can go through them, except to say that a lot of the other things are chairing different regional committees, which I've been on some of these committees. Chair goes away, I've been through situations where you've got a chair to a committee, and you go through an election, and the person's gone, and you have to elect a new chair. It's not a, you know, a great deal of pain and suffering, especially, again, for the San Carlos resident, they don't know that this even happened. So what I'm telling my council members is, I think we need some, somebody's talked about lean and mean, and we're not lean and mean enough. And I think we need to make that cut. If council's not willing to make that cut or even discuss it further, then I'll just simply vote against the budget, because I think that's the kind of action we need to take. I have been on council for seven years, and for seven years, we have nickled and dimed services away by saying, "Well, we'll close this building from being open eight hours to five, and we'll save this much money, and we'll do this over here and save, you know, $1,500, and we'll do this over there and save, you know, $110,000." And to me, that's a little painful when we do those kinds of things, and as someone mentioned from the public, at the same time, we turn around, we give a long-lasting contractor just before they're about to leave, a raise. I just, council members, I just don't get it. And so that's what I'm willing to do, is make this cut. I think it's necessary to reinstate some of these programs and give the citizens of San Carlos the services they deserve and they pay taxes for.
Thank you very much. Well, I, Councilmember Ahmad, this is also my first six months on city council and first experience with budget. I actually enjoyed it. I have a financial background, I dove into a lot of the pages and the numbers, and I'm going to tell you a few things that I've learned, but more importantly, I'm going to try to summarize with what I think our action plan should be. Regarding what I learned, actually, if you want to dive into adult sports, when Rick spoke, we talked about 57,000, it's actually a gross of $98,000. We do get 41,000 of revenue, which is fees, which primarily goes to the referees. Rick calculated that basketball pays about 40,000. Well, we actually budgeted about 30,000, which is pretty common. That's what 40,000 was this past year, next year, being a little conservative, that plus volleyball and, and what's the other sport? Basketball, volleyball, and softball, another 10,000 from the other two sports is our 40,000. That brings it down to 57,000. Well, why does it cost so much? The other two items are, we're paying two part-time people with benefits to run the program. We need those people to run the program. I think Barry talked about that. We also have $20,000 of youth instruction. These are consultants, contractors, we pay to come in to do that. Now, do we need to do that? Maybe not this next year. Should we do that? Maybe. So taking a number of 57,000, which is what we reviewed, it's probably a fair number, it's a little conservative on the revenue side, but maybe we could drop it by 10,000 if we were aggressive with the revenue. We could also knock out the instructions, 20,000. Well, pretty soon, we're down 30, we're down to 27,000. Would I have still cut the program? Probably, and I'll tell you why, coming up. Tennis, $14,000. Would I cut the program, would I cut the program now? Probably, and I'll tell you why, it's coming up. And what's coming up is looking at our complete financial picture. Mayor Lewis, a few times in the last month or two, talked about our property tax issue, and I'm not going to go back into that, but we don't get a lot of money based on Prop 13 and our assessment. We get 11 cents, which is about half of what a lot of other cities get. But this year, in our budget, we will, for general fund, we have revenues of $14 million that comes in from property taxes and sales tax. Jeff talked about our revenue growth is about 2% to 3%. That's right. Actually, the property tax and sales tax, dollars for dollar, it actually is fairly flat, because this last year, there was what's called E-RAP, there's some adjustments from the state, which gave us some extra money in the base year to go into next year. But regardless, you could say, we have $14 million of money. The slide of safety, police and fire, is 54% of our budget. Well, it's 14.4 million dollars. So when people meet me on the street and they say, "I pay my taxes, I want safety, I want services, and I want my street paved," well, I could tell them, they'd say, "Well, what you, I only pay in property tax, but what you pay in sales tax, or with all the merchants that comes in, pretty much is gobbled up or eaten up with safety." And should this be the case? Probably yes. Those are our most important players. I think any survey, I ask anybody here in the audience or at home on TV, you truly respect safety. When you don't have it, you really know what it's like not to have it. Now, another council member mentioned Vallejo. I went back, I saved every piece of paper for the last six months, and the Vallejo article and chronicle on March 10th, 2008, there's a little chart here that talks about the, basically, one of the, they have lots of problems that we don't have. But they do have, one issue they highlighted was public safety expenses. And from the eight years, from 2000 to 2008, you'll see that actually, the first six years, their public safety was 69%. There are a couple of years that were a little higher, but pretty consistently 69%. Ours is 53, 54%. However, when it went into the last two years, they paid their fire people and their police people a fair wage. With benefits, we need to do that, to compete. They work hard, there's a going wage, we need to do that. What happened, though, is their percentage went to 76% in '07 and '08, not because of what we paid out, it's because their revenues flattened out. Their revenues over 10 years was 60 million, 70 million, got up to 84 million in '06, 84 million in '07, 83 million in '08. So their revenues slowed down, and that is a concern, along with 10 other problems that they have. So we're not in a dire situation, but it is serious. And right now, it's really interesting to realize, property tax and sales tax pays for public safety. Everything else comes from those miscellaneous other dollars we get from fees and other things that come in that pay for our other organizations within the city. And so I do think we need to be very careful to navigate. I'd really welcome community input over the next six months before we get to the next budget cycle, and talk about services, understand really what the major problem of the city is, is revenue. Revenue is only growing at 2% to 3%. Expenses are growing about 6% or 7%, in fact, safety's in that 7% to 8% growth, with what we're growing at. Expenses are growing twice as much as the revenues. So with the initiation of the utility tax, with economic growth on the east side, with Marketplace, with Palo Alto Medical, we're going to get there, but the next five years are going to be pretty tough until we get that steamship going with economic development for our city. My second point, and I've seen some progress, and I'd like to compliment staff, although I didn't see a financial report until last month as far as actuals. We were given a budget right away when we came on council. We finally saw actuals a month ago, we were thrown into the budget cycle. I would surely like to see more actual reporting, at least twice a year, maybe four times a year. I think we've done a good job with FTE. The glossary now defines FTE as full-time equivalency, not full-time employees, although I still think there's some work to be done on how we track our people. People accounts for 80% of our costs. We need to be very careful on how we track our people costs. And so I think there's good progress there, and we'll do a better job. Next part is a story. When I was in finance with HB, this goes back in the early years, 25 years ago, one department put out what was called a trader, which was kind of their local newsprint, buy and sell anything, your car, a boat, you could rent your cabin, and do all that sort of stuff. And it was costing, it got up to about $60,000 a year for the company to do this. Bear with me, I think there's a good lesson with this story. The executives, Vice President I met with, went through the budget cycle, he said, "Tell them to do it for 20,000 or don't do it." Guess what happened that next month? The really nice, you know, 40-pound weight paper turned to newsprint. And I thought that actually saved quite a bit of money. So that saved $40,000? No. What I found out is this organization was so service-oriented, they listened to their customers, and people wanted to get the trader on the same day, at the same time, in every site on the West Coast. And they were paying couriers to basically, we didn't have FedEx back then, I don't think, but we were basically paying it so that it arrived and it was distributed at noon on Friday every week. And that's where most of the cost was going. They were trying to do such a good job, listening to their customers, providing good service, they lost sight on how much it was costing. They did it for 20,000, and guess what happened five or 10 years later? Craigslist comes along. They don't have to do it anymore, it's free. So my comment is, and when I've got involved in all of these areas, you know, we don't have a lot of people, it's really a tight ship, but I do want, and I saw opportunities, and Mark has been very welcoming, I go in there and I come up and throw five ideas with him, he tells me I'm wrong on three, but he listens to the other two. And while I'm satisfied with the budget, and I really feel we do need to make some really significant cuts to balance the budget, I don't care as much of the budget. We're going to set it in place. I'm going to manage, and I'm going to work with Mark and with the council and with the staff to manage actuals. We're going to try to make the best business decisions that provide good service within affordability for our city, and that's what we're going to do. I actually almost think that finance is so important, I don't mean to surprise you, Mark, here, but a finance committee is one idea. There is so much time and work, and there's a few of us that are so interested in spending the time and working with your staff, and maybe you, I'd just like to consider that so that we can spend good quality time and make the best decisions for the bottom line for our city. And with that, I just do want to throw out just a couple other thoughts here. Quanis Club has provided us a letter here right before the meeting. I did get a chance to talk to Phil, the president, over the weekend. As you know, that's one of the areas to cut. There is a lot of savings by moving people and cutting people to some of our other sites. It's a building that does cost us, just utilities and janitorials, $20,000 per year. I do think, though, what I got from Phil was that as we look at getting a revenue stream or renting that out, that building was built, and if I misstate this, please correct me, for community benefit. And we need to look at the revenue stream, but we surely need to look at community benefit and whoever goes into that building, maybe there's some community benefit, maybe there's some capital improvements, maybe we spin through the building up, and five years from now, we turn it back over and it becomes, you know, the good place for hometown days and all the other functions and classes and everything else that we have in town. So please be patient with us on that. The other very small item, but it's, I'm very passionate about it, there's an item here, because of staffing to cut or to consolidate the commissions, we're talking about Parks and Rec, cultural arts, senior advisory, because it takes staff time, I think we need to work through that. I think those committees work very hard, they help the council, and I think we need to work with a compromise on minimizing staff time and still working with the committees as you have, all your committees that work with each of you. I think it's a very important part of how we do business with the city, and it's also a very good part of getting incredible volunteers that get developed in the city, that move through the ranks, make their place, make a contribution, some of them even end up on city council and hopefully are able to make better decisions because they've experienced working in those areas for the city. So with that, I think I have said everything, hang on, I have a commission. So my summary is, there's some tough decisions that we've made. I will still uphold all the cuts that we made a month ago. I do leave the door open as we re-engineer and go in and looking at what it really costs to run some of these programs, and what we could do to run them maybe cheaper or with fewer people, or a better way, because the business model maybe is different. I would really welcome working with each of the groups that spoke here tonight to reinstitute those buildings, those activities, those lights for the community of San Carlos. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to make sure that everybody understands, there's 96 separate items that were presented to us by the city manager, either increases or eliminations, reductions this year. And we had to look at the quality of life, we had to look at the dollars. I felt we did a triage, and we selected the ones that we felt were the ones that were the best for the city. Certainly, other people would have other opinions. I'm sure if you brought five other people up here, you would get different opinions. I'm not sure you'd get more than a few that we changed, but perhaps you would. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands, we didn't just get this and five minutes later have to vote on it. We got a lot, and at least I didn't. I realize it's difficult to go through this. Government is not like private industry. It doesn't work the same way. It works at a different pace. You have to get into the program, and it's difficult to do. This is my third one, so I'm a little bit more, hopefully, advanced on how this works. And it is not an easy process. But I want to make sure that everybody understands that we didn't just do this on a lark, that a lot of time and effort was put in, number one, to prepare it for us, and number two, that we looked at it. Relative to the dollars of what something costs, as Barry Weiss, our park and rec director, said, the dollars don't always add up. In other words, as he indicated, it's not a matter of just dollars, it's a matter of people. If you don't have a person, it doesn't make any difference how much it costs here. And I think Barry indicated that on a couple of his items. So that's the other difficult part about this budget. It's not just making the numbers come out. I learned that the first year, because I had all kinds of great ideas, and they said we don't have the people for it. So I wanted to make sure that was indicated. I mentioned about private industry. I have to disagree with Councilmember Grokot, and respectfully disagree. If I felt that cutting one position would solve our problem on this budget, I would do it in a New York minute. But I think it's not going to solve our systemic problem, and that's the problem, or that's the issue that we have in the city. We have $1.5 million in possible cuts that we didn't make. I know Councilmember Armand, at one point during our budget process, wanted to go through and, you know, basically, as you mentioned earlier, cut a lot more than we did. That didn't get the required support from the other folks, but I appreciate and respect that opinion. We've got to figure out a way to identify what our society or what our city wants for our public safety, our public works, our park and rec, and speak to that. It's difficult to do, because you've got to identify, again, as I said before, what we feel are the most important things to do. No one wants to cut out adult basketball. Last year, I remember, I was, we were able to save it. No one wants to cut out the lights for the tennis courts. A lot of us actually do athletics at different times in our lives, and even today. But we have to, again, as I said, go through triage and identify what items, is it a police officer? Is it lights? Is it disposition? Is it clothing use center? Is it a park and rec maintenance worker? What is it? And we, again, went through and made our choices. Not easily, but we did. Government, unlike private industry also, government can't raise prices. If, in private industry, it can possibly be done that you can, you can raise your price on something, you might not sell it, but you can certainly try to raise your price. Government can't do that. We have to go back to the city, to the citizens on any, just about any large increase that we have, excluding some fees that we collect. And I think that's part of the issues that we're facing. And we're not alone in this. Up and down the peninsula, as well as in our state government, we're identifying many items that we have to just figure out which way we're going. I think on all these cuts that we've made, and whether they're in park and rec, or in administrative, or in community development, or wherever they are, I know we're going to have a mid-year review, and I believe that's in, is it that in January, Mr.?
January to February.
To February, okay. I mean, obviously, all these things, to me, are going to, everything that's on here, whether we cut it or whether we didn't, comes back up in my mind to see where we are at that point. Some of the revenues we anticipate might be higher, they might be lower. Some of the cuts that we made might seem more draconian now than they will then. So I want to make sure everybody realizes, just because it disappears or it goes away today, it doesn't mean it can't come back. And lastly, I want to sort of say, I guess, to everybody, we're a board of directors. We hire the staff. The staff does the work. We are a board of directors. We set policy. We don't, or in my opinion, I shouldn't say we don't, in my opinion, we should not micromanage. If we want to micromanage, then we need to replace staff. And I have no problem with that if we feel staff is doing a good job. But I think we have to make sure that we realize we're a board of directors. If we're presented with 100 things by our staff, we have to decide what we want to do. If we want to dive in and find 100 more, great, great for us. But that's what we have staff for. So I just want to make sure everybody understands what our role is, in my opinion, what our role is up here, sitting on the dais. And at this point, I'm willing to go with the approval of the budget that we had, and yet making sure that we don't lose sight of the things that we've, we've cut, and make sure that we come back and make sure we can see if there's possibilities for changing that in the future. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I have a couple of just quick clarifications for staff. In the policy area of the budget that we're adopting, are we adopting those policies, or those are, one of the council members clarified that, to say that these are policy recommendations, not policy adoptions. Is that true? Just because there's one or two things in there that I don't remember, as a council, we voted on officially to be a policy.
Correct. These are new policies that are being recommended to you tonight. So if you want to tweak the language to some degree within that document, we may do so. It's recommended that part of the budget document have policies such as this within the document. So we've created these policies to comply with the best practices for presentation of a budget to the council.
Right. Well, I want to make sure council's aware of that. And if we want to have further discussion of some of these, we may need to do that, just because I'm not sure that we're all aware of that. I do want to ask you, in that case, though, at least about one, unless the council wants to jump in, as to whether or not everybody's comfortable in adopting all these policies tonight. But I know it's best practice, when we talked about general fund reserve, general fund reserve for economic uncertainties, equal to a minimum of 10% of the general fund expenses, with a goal of increasing over the next year to 20%. I realize that we talked about that as a goal, and it's a best practice goal. But adopting that as a policy tonight is a commitment to a more severe series of cuts than I think we may be able to fiscally sustain. So I would want that analyzed more carefully before I felt comfortable adopting that within the policy. If council's all read through these policies and is all on board with all of them, I'd like to have that discussion. So that's my concern. I don't think we've seen a projection for what that actually means.
Can you reference that again, please?
I'm sorry, page 20, under D, number 2A. And I'll let council take a look at that or jump in on that while I make other comments, if you prefer. So if we decide to adopt this tonight, I would like to remove that item for study before we commit to that as a policy. So I'll offer that up for you to consider while I make other comments before there's a motion tonight. And also, with respect to Councilmember Armand's comments about a finance committee, and I think Councilmember Royce mentioned that, I mean, if that is council's pleasure to have a finance committee, to take a look at more, maybe more actualized costs, and to sort of come up with new ideas for a different revenue generation, or how we do this process, I'd certainly support that. I think staff does a great job, and I think it's always good, the more heads we put together on these kinds of things, the better results normally. So I'd support that. You know, I don't know that I'm going to say anything dramatically different than other council members have said tonight. And I think several of the council members have been well spoken in what the situation is, and I think probably, in general, the public understands where we are. This is all about fiscal responsibility. You know, since December, when I took on mayor, I knew that this was going to be an incredibly difficult year for the city. And it was without some reservation that I knew that the specter of what the sort of the economic situation was for San Carlos, and the quality of life that we enjoy, and the friends that I've made, both on staff and public and so forth, were all going to be affected by this. When, you know, when we look at budget cutbacks, and we talk about things like a food program for seniors being cut back, putting basically the VIP program, which is a program for the disabled youth in San Carlos, that provide, we provide that for the county, and we put that basically on notice, having to be revenue neutral. We talk about cutting back the youth center, public safety, putting limitations on what we think could be more positive public safety measures, because we don't have the money. And there's others that other council members have mentioned. If anybody thinks that this board of directors goes into a situation like that lightly, then boy, you'd be sadly mistaken on that front. These, I think Ms. Burroughs said in public comment, you know, boy, how can you do this? You know, and she, I think, mentioned $78,000 worth of cuts. Well, I don't know how we're going to do it. I know we have to do it. The reason everybody's been banging the economic development drum is because people know how dire this can be. And I think the conundrum for everybody on council, everybody in San Carlos, is how do we maintain our quality of life? That is the reason we all feel so passionate about the city, and right this kind of economic situation that we have. It's not redundant for everybody to be aware that the surrounding cities get twice the funding from property taxes that San Carlos does for public safety, not to mention general fund. Twice. We get 11 cents on the dollar. Surrounding cities get as much 25, 26 cents for public safety and general fund dollars from property tax. We are severely handicapped in our ability to do what we do. And I think it's only out of incredible volunteerism, great private organizations like the tennis club, and some of the other sports organizations, and service organizations, that we maintain what we've got. And in a way, I think what Councilmember Armand said, is we're sort of living the dream, but we're, you know, everything's coming home to roost. And it's our inauspicious job to start to make everybody aware of that reality. Nobody in politics, if you call this a political body, talks about taxes, because you know that, boy, you never get elected if you talk too long and hard about taxes. But it's the reality, when you get 11% on the dollar. I mean, I think that has to be part of the discussion, no matter what your philosophical bent is and where you come from. Economic development, nobody talks about the potential big-box development of a beautiful, small town like San Carlos if you're not incredibly economically handicapped, and/or any of these budget cuts that we're talking about tonight. So I just want to say, I think what I love about San Carlos is what the character of the town is, and I think great character gets defined in times like this, is how do you react to difficult times, and how do you react to difficult cuts, and where do we come together to sort of maintain what we have. And we have the nucleus of the kind of place that can react to this kind of thing, and move forward, and try to do the best that we can, and right this situation. So council unanimously supported this budget in our study session. And I'll certainly support it tonight. And I will also tell you that, you know, it's been, it's a tough time for anybody to sit up here on the dais and enact this. But we do what we think is right for the city in the long term, so we can maintain what, to the best of our ability, what we have. So council, without any further comments, maintain motion. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of Resolution Number 2008-33, resolution for the City Council of the City of San Carlos, adopting a final budget for the fiscal year 2008, 2009.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
For the chair, Mr. Mayor, it's a city resolution, RDA resolution, and then there's a subsequent resolution regarding appropriation. So is that one?
Should we amend the motion?
All together.
All three of those can be done together?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, separate motions, all three. Okay. Shall we amend the first one? And the first one is a resolution, is that right, Christine?
Right. Councilmember Armand?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the adoption of RDA Resolution Number?
152.
Resolution for the redevelopment agency of the City of San Carlos, adopting a final budget for fiscal year 2008, 2009.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Director Armand?
Yes.
Director Grisilli?
Yes.
Director Grokot?
Yes.
Director Royce?
Yes.
Chair Lewis?
Yes.
And the third?
Mr. Mayor, with regard to the adoption of the financial policies, if it's the pleasure of the council to potentially table this until some of the financial analysis has come back, I'd move to table this.
With council's pleasure, I'd support that, just because I think that if we're adopting them as official policies, I think they bear greater scrutiny.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to table this item till the time of your pleasure.
I would second that.
Through the chair, that we can, that can be tabled?
If I may, excuse me. If we table it, we would actually like to bring this back at the next council meeting for further discussion.
What I would suggest is that council take a look at this as not just, not as a recommendation for adoption, and to the extent possible, vet questions with staff, so that we can move it to the next meeting. If the next meeting won't hamper staff, I just, I think we need to know the full fiscal implication of certain things like this, certainly like the one that I mentioned. Counsel?
I just want to make sure legally we can do it, that's all. I'm looking at the city attorney. You don't have to do it tonight. We do it separately.
There's no legal need to adopt it tonight. So you can do it at the next meeting or the meeting after that.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure we covered it in time. For June 30th, I didn't know if there was a deadline that we had to approve it by.
And if, again, if council would prefer for us to try to just remove this one item for discussion for the next meeting and adopt everything else, we can do that. I pulled this one out. It depends on what council's comfortable with.
I'd like to discuss it, Mr. Mayor, if we can.
Okay. Is that by consensus? So no motion forthcoming on the policies then?
Need a motion to table?
To bring it to the next meeting?
We would like to bring it to the next meeting. If we could get this done before the end of the fiscal year, we would prefer to do that. So we'll bring it back and have a fuller discussion on it at the next meeting.
You don't need a motion. Okay, thank you.
Very good. And with that, city clerk, is that all the items of item 8, 8A?
Through the chair, Mr. Mayor, there is a resolution on the GAN initiative. It's right after that, one you were talking about, AI. And I believe Mr. Malby would like that adopted tonight.
That's correct. There is a staff report included in your packet discussing the GAN limit. That is a legal requirement that all cities must adopt. There are several different formulas and factors that go into determining the GAN limit, but long story short, the city's well under the GAN limit. If you have any additional questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of Resolution Number 2008-
34.
Resolution in City Council of the City of San Carlos, selecting the population and inflation adjustment factors, and establishing the 2008, 2009 appropriations limit of the City of San Carlos pursuant to California Constitution, Article 15D and Section 7900 of the California Government Code.
Second.
Councilmember Armand?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
And with that, we will move on to item number nine, which is new business, and that's consideration of authorizing a contract to Neil Martin Associates. Staff, is there a hesitation? Great.
Good evening. Deborah Nelson, planning manager. The city's currently in the end of the second year of a three-year contract with Neil Martin and Associates. And each of the first two years of the same contract were periods of transition, as will be this next year. The first two years transitioned from contract services covering most of the community development department services of planning and housing functions, to city employees, with the hiring of the community development director, the economic development and housing manager, and the planning manager. So in the upcoming year, we will implement what your council just authorized, and that's the conversion of journey and entry-level planners from contract service to city employees, and a $65,000 reduction as a business improvement plan that we will implement regarding the way that we process residential design review. As a community- As a Community Development Department, we'll also respond to the City Council's strategic plan and your Economic Development Plan implementation. And we see a benefit in retaining the Neil Martin and Associates services over this third year to assist us with some of that work, as they are individuals with long-term working relationships and skills with the city, and they carry with them an institutional knowledge that we believe is quite important moving forward, at least for yet one more year. So the contract proposes a shift from, from a contract with a monthly retainer to a time and materials basis. It calls for responding to our current workload. It also calls for retaining a cap of $600,000, though we don't anticipate meeting that cap, but we would like to retain the flexibility should, over this next year, particularly in the, in the area of implementing the economic development strategy, that we need to bring forward extra initiatives. The additional costs that you approved to the redevelopment agency to accommodate a shift of some of the work to help implement the economic development strategy is $76,161, and there's a $65,000 reduction in the general fund expense. And I'm available for questions.
Yep. Counsel, questions?
I, I'm sorry. I had a quick question, Deborah. How much did we spend this year on the contract?
About $347,000 in general fund.
Okay, thank you.
I just want some clarification. Is this general fund and RDA, or is it all?
Yes, as Jeff Maltby explained earlier, that there are, because we are a small city, some of the RDA expenses that we incur as a city, including those things that are planning, or it's hard to draw the line between, are you doing this residential project in the redevelopment area as a redevelopment project, or as a planning application? We do have a percentage of the split of that contract anyway. We are proposing with this amendment to it, that we actually assign about 1.3 people, that's administrative, it's a very principal planner level, it's a journey-level planner, on an ad needed basis, to do some of these more complex projects for the Economic Development Plan Strategy.
The questions for staff? My only question is, so we are going to have, when you transition from monthly retainer to reversal in time and materials, the only way we can, so we just cap time and materials at some point, is that right? I mean, there is the risk in any sort of project, when you go from flat rate to time and materials, time and materials can inflate.
In part, how we cap it is the table, that's Exhibit B, that is the number of hours assigned for each planner and their billing rate.
Right. So I guess effectively, I'm just trying to say, at this point, with this plan, you feel confident that we're going to get the same level of service, of services that we've gotten in the past?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Counsel, any motion or other questions?
I have no questions on this for staff, but I am, I will say I'm surprised by it, because the impression I received when we were talking about the positions was that there was, you know, no additional cost. Now, granted, there's no additional cost to the general fund, but there is cost to our RDA program. That's essentially what's happening, is the assignment of expenses is being taken away from the general fund in some respects and put to the RDA. And I would just like to have known that ahead of time, instead of getting it just as an element here, because as it appeared, we were, we were cutting two consultant, or so many consultant positions and paying for two new employees through those consultant positions, and that's, to me, was not the full impact of the story, the full impact of the story we're getting tonight.
I guess in response to that, I would indicate that we, you know, have gone through a budget process where we've included the redevelopment program as part of that process. You know, I don't know that we spoke specifically to the Neil Martin contract with respect to that particular service that's being brought forward to you tonight by way of this contract, but we certainly, you know, attempted through the budgeting process to advise the council on the need for additional resources with our economic development program that we think can be funded by and attributable to the redevelopment fund.
Counsel, we've got a?
Yeah, just one question. I think it was mentioned by Deborah, but we will see ourselves extricating the city from these kind of commitments in about a year?
I'm not sure if these kinds of commitments. This particular contract, we're just amending the existing contract with Neil Martin and Associates, which was a three-year agreement. And so the third year is being amended now to accommodate the transition to full-time employees, as well as?
That's what I mean.
Yes. And so next year, you know, I, I can't predict necessarily, but it wouldn't surprise me that the city would still have a need for consulting services to supplement our rather skeletal staff of full-time employees. So you may or may not desire to have supplemental planning services, but what we've committed to is that we would go through a full selection process to determine which firm would, would provide us services that we determined were necessary.
Very well. That's the other thing I would be looking for, is that, you know, at some point, we need to extricate ourselves from a contract with, you know, a single provider, and not that we'd not go back to that provider, but at least before going back to that provider, we might look at some other firms that could do the same thing.
Very good. I know I do have one public speaker slip, but I think Anthony Housefield is left, so either no longer wants to speak on this, or it was the wrong item number. So just want to make that, if there's any other public comment, we can take on this time and this item. Okay, thank you. Sorry, Councilmember Royce, did you want to comment? No? Okay. Any other?
I make a motion, I guess, let's see what we need here. Authorize the city manager to execute a contract amendment with Neil Martin and Associates for consulting services with the Community Development Department?
Second. Any others? Discussion? Christine?
Councilmember Ahmad?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
And with that, we'll move on to item number 10A as a redevelopment agency item. So you're all now directors, and this is consideration of adopting a resolution for a two-year contract for economic development.
Good evening, Honorable Chairman and Members of the Agency Board. I'm Mark Suwicky, Economic Development and Housing Manager. Staff is recommending your approval of a two-year contract for economic development and redevelopment consulting services with the firm of Roselal Spevesek Group, referred to as RSG. Funding for these services have previously been budgeted by the RDA, and there's no impact to the general fund. The city and agency have had a successful relationship with RSG since 2005, receiving valuable assistance and advice on a number of important economic development and redevelopment projects, including completion of the RDA's five-year implementation plan in 2006, and preparation of the city's economic development plan adopted in 2007. In 2007, staff released an RFP to several qualified firms to provide ongoing services in this area. RSG was chosen based on superior skill, experience, track record, ability to meet deadlines, cost of work output, quality of written and oral presentations, and their enthusiasm for helping San Carlos meet its economic development goals. For fiscal year 2007-08, the agency approved a one-year contract with RSG for $85,000. Under that contract, RSG drafted a midterm review of the five-year implementation plan, prepared a retail analysis of the Transit Village project, analyzed financial feasibility of Wheeler and South Plazas, reviewed and verified city budget projections and methodologies, evaluated lease, sale, and purchase opportunities, evaluated housing developer pro formas, participated in ED and marketing discussions with EDAC and the Economic Development Partnership, among other activities. Current budget with RSG will be exhausted before fiscal year end. We recommend extending our relationship with RSG to, for a new two-year contract for time and materials not to exceed $150,000 per year. This will allow us to continue work on the midterm review of the RDA plan, prepare the next five-year plan, which we will adopt starting with July 2009, update the economic development plan, analyze the feasibility of and facilitate potential redevelopment of the Landmark Hotel site, study the fiscal impacts of the Transit Village, prepare a marketing strategy, and probably much, much more. After the two-year term of this contract would end, we'll release an RFP again to all qualified consultants for a contract going forward to provide continued services. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, and also invite you, if you wish, to direct any questions to Frank Spevesek, who's here with us tonight.
Counsel, questions for staff?
I have one. I noticed one of the bullet points on here is review of a third-party fiscal impact study to be prepared for the San Trans Transit Village project. That will be paid for by our RDA and not by San Trans, by the developer?
San Trans has hired their own consultant to prepare the fiscal impact analysis. This is looking at it from our side to be sure of the methodologies they're using, and, you know, whether they've, whether they've covered everything that we want them to cover.
There's no way for them to pay for that as well, third party?
I'm sure we can ask that question, or look into that.
Yeah.
Is it necessarily part of this contract, or is this just a scope of work that they may or may not do?
The scope of the things that they would do, we can, we can look into seeing as well.
I think they should, we should press that point with San Trans. Thank you.
Okay. Other counsel comments or questions?
Just one quick question. I noticed that there's a roughly $20,000 line item for Landmark Hotel strategy. Just curious, what's the deliverable, and when do we get it?
It's one of the council's strategic objectives, six-month objectives, for us to come back and provide you with information on the feasibility of a landmark hotel development on that site, whether any of the property owners are interested and willing, and what the RDA could potentially do to facilitate that. And RDA would help us looking at the feasibility of a development.
So the expectation is that that will be final by September?
Hope to bring it in August or late July.
Okay, but before the next retreat?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move for the adoption of resolution number?
RDA 153.
A resolution for the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency approving agreement for services with Roselal Spevesek?
Spevesek.
Okay. True.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Thank you, Christine.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Director, but yes.
I'm sorry, Director Ahmad? Director Grisilli?
Yes.
Director Grocott?
Yes.
Director Royce?
Yes.
Chair Lewis?
Yes.
With that, any other items to be completed on staff? Okay, with that, we will adjourn to the next meeting. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, staff.